...of conflict interest, please notify me and I'll make sure that your name is recorded in the meeting minutes. Item number six, presentation, item 6.1, educational presentation on medical assistance in dying. We have with us Mary, is she here with us today? I didn't know that was your first name. Yeah, only knew you were Ella. All right, could I get you to press the red button there and your mic will start flashing, I'll turn it on, and you have the floor.
Do I just pull it over here?
No, you don't have to.
Okay.
It's, you don't have to speak right into it.
Okay, good. This isn't my forte. Good afternoon, and I would like to thank you council members for providing me an opportunity to speak here today. My subject, as John has said, is made medically assisted and dying. Canada has the dubious honour of being the global capital of euthanasian. My information that I provide here today has been researched from government sources available to all. Canada has killed more people with lethal injections last year than any country on earth, many of them homeless, poor, and helpless. Also, a recent article on CTV reported that Canada is performing more organ donations from made recipients than any other country. There is a saying that sometimes holds true, follow the money, organs are being sold. As of March 17th, and several days from now, 2023, there was a proposal to offer lethal injections to anyone 18 and up who judges their mental health difficulties to be intolerable. This has thankfully been delayed, but we still have lobbyists and nonprofit organizations who are pushing for this to become law, and a charitable organization believes that this should start at 12 years old. I ask you to think about the words I just spoke, 12 years old. Anyone can have a bad day, week, or month, and if these people are being offered made as a solution rather than being offered mental health, our society has a real problem. Do you know that recently five veterans who suffered from PTSD were offered made? The very people that defended our country and other countries to protect the lives of others are now being offered death. Shame. I recently watched a video of a young man with Down syndrome stand before the US Congress to plead for their right to live, and that's in the United States. Have we come so far in society that death is now being treated as a solution to life's problems? I have two grandchildren who do not have their father because of suicide. Mental health issues are massive, especially since COVID and the lockdowns which have harmed many people, children included. Do I believe that made has a place? I do. My best friend's son, who was in his final stage of inoperable cancer and was suffering from pain that was not treatable, agreed to have made. This is a medically assisted and dying activity book that was published by the government for six to 12-year-olds to help them think about made. On Saturday, a friend sent me an article of an interview with a Canadian doctor and American journalist. This statement I cannot forget. If a mature minor decides to use made and their parents are against this, the child's wishes supersede the parent's decision. I will leave this with you. Is this what our communities are to become? You may ask, what can I do? We can fight for more mental health, programs for youth, involvements in sports, et cetera. My question for you today, and I'm not going to ask you to answer, an answer from any of you, but I would like for you to think about what I have shared and ask yourself, go deep into your heart, is this what we want for our children, our grandchildren, and our communities? As a society, have we become so callous and cold that life has no value? Community starts at the local level and works its way up the ladder. If you care about your community, then we should all be fighting against offering this to children especially. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Does anyone have any comments? Hearing none. Thank you very much, Ella, for making that presentation to council. Moving on, item 6.2, Marissa Parker. The microphone's not on, you don't have to do nothing, you just need to speak.
It's on, okay.
Yeah, it's on. You don't need to speak directly into it. So, welcome.
Thank you. Thanks for having me.
Thank you for coming. I'll pass the floor over to you. You have a written presentation in our agenda, so.
I do, yes. Thank you. Thank you council and staff for having me here today to chat a bit more about my role and what I've been up to in the past few months. So to start, I thought it would be best to just review my strategic plan. So my plan involves more high-level items such as my overall goals, as well as more of the minutia, smaller things and tasks that will allow me to help accomplish those goals. But today we'll focus on more high-level. To begin, I have two goals. So the first is to foster trust with stakeholders by exhibiting transparency through the release of authentic content in a timely manner. Now, these stakeholders refer both internally, so staff members and council members, as well as externally, so our partners or really members of the public at large. My other goal is to promote the Cape Forchue Lighthouse as a world-class tourism destination, attracting visitors to southwest Nova from the rest of the province, country, and the world. And these goals really help guide my actions on the day-to-day. When you look at my strategic plan, you can really see three main categories. These include internal comms, external comms, and marketing to the Cape Forchue Lighthouse. Now, all of these categories really contain a wide range of different tasks that I complete, but I'll just focus on some of the ones that I've been putting more attention to as of late. So first, for internal communications, one item that I have is the staff bulletin board. Now, this board is in our lunchroom and it's essentially every month I'll have a different theme. For example, last month was Guess the Coworker Baby Photo Edition, and it's just aimed to allow connections in a more casual manner among our staff members. Another internal comms piece, which also actually relates to external comms as well now, is our monthly video updates. So as you know, every month, at the end of the month, I'll create a recap video, and this video will be posted on our social media, as well it's delivered to both staff and council. And my goal with these videos is to make it more attractive, make it more interesting with colors and photo elements as well. And so we tie in pieces from council and municipalities as a whole, as well as Yarmouth Recreation, Senior Safety, and Cape Forchue. Moving on to external comms, so of course, big thing that comes to mind is social media, you know, Facebook, Instagram, but we also have our newsletter, so this is bi-yearly, and the goal for this year is to really reduce the number of words. We found that it was really cluttered and really busy with words, so we want to reduce the number of words and make it more attractive, have more photos and graphics. And so this will be shown in our next newsletter, which will be released in June, so it's the spring/summer 2023 edition, and then also press releases. I mean, whenever something of note happens in the municipality, create a press release. This is displayed to the public in terms of on our Facebook as well as our website, and it's also given directly to members of the media. Lastly, for the lighthouse, lots of social media goes into that. I'm active on five of the biggest social media platforms, Facebook, Instagram, TikTok, Twitter, and Pinterest. So I'm constantly putting out content on all of those platforms, as well just improving our website. This year, we were able to add a donation page, an FAQ page, and another page for people who want to sign up to host an event at the lighthouse on the grounds. And as well, just helping Jennifer to plan for the upcoming season with different events. We have lots of events that we want to execute this year. So moving on to some more specific projects that I've been working on, the first is the Noble West Regional Business Parks Website and Promotional Material Project. So I was working with Mark Blin on this, and essentially, we engaged with Mumford Connect in creating a new website, marketing material, as well as a promotional video. That finished at the end of January, and we're really pleased with how it turned out. They were a very professional team and created some really fantastic content. And so, moving forward from there, we'll be preparing for a launch event that will occur later in the spring for the name reveal and brand reveal. Another thing I've been working on is an educational campaign on the municipal wastewater system. Unfortunately, Public Works has found that they have been receiving an increased number of items in the system that shouldn't be there, so like mopheads, for example, foods, tampons, you name it, they've been finding it in the wastewater system. And so, I've been working with them to create a campaign to try and reduce this. So it's called What Not to Flush, and I have a news release on our website, yep, and social media reminders as well as magnets. And so, this is kind of an ongoing process. Every month, I put updates out on our website just to remind people, you know, only wastewater and toilet tissue should be going into those systems. And another educational campaign I've been working on is enforcing the reverse onus clauses of the Solid Waste Resource Collection and Disposal Bylaw. So as you all know, on April 1st, we will be enforcing the reverse onus clauses of this bylaw. And so it was really important for us to educate the public and let them know that this was happening and what it means and the implications for them. And as a result, we created a press release, various social media posts as well, starting in mid-January. We have one every single week just reminding people and providing them with more information, alternative disposal methods, et cetera. There will also be a Facebook ad coming out closer to the enforcement date of April 1st, and on the radio as well, on CJLS. And finally, for Cape Forchue, so I've been working on growing our presence on all social media platforms, but most especially, there have been platforms that were lacking in the past that I've been trying to increase, and that includes TikTok, Pinterest, and also Twitter. So we've seen an increased growth on all of those platforms, which has been very positive. And just one highlight piece, I guess, for social media with Cape Forchue is the Dumping Day Live video actually reached 25,000 people, which was very positive, and I was really happy about that. And lastly, I've been working with Jennifer, as I mentioned before, to prepare for the upcoming season, specifically in terms of events. So we're hoping to have a monthly history of Cape Forchue with local historians, as well as music, live music occurring weekly on the grounds. And that was kind of a high level of what I've been up to. I'll open the floor to any questions.
Deputy Ward.
Marissa, thanks for your report. When it comes to the business park, is there some element in the video, website, that type of thing, about the expansion?
In my monthly update videos, do you mean?
No, on the website for the business park, the one you're developing with Mark?
Oh, yes, for the different stages expansion, yes, there is. Yeah, so you'll find it there.
Thank you.
I see no other microphones right now, Marissa. I did see Lauren after I started talking, so I'm gonna grab the floor first. I was recently with my wife here the other day, and we were going through some stuff that the municipality district of Digby, and I never mentioned this to the CEO, but maybe she remembers it, as regards to elder transcripts. I think that'd be something that'd be kind of neat, because nowadays, where of course we have all these electronics, and I was watching over one of my wife's family members, his name was Stuart Cardy, he's from the Digby Neck area, and he was talking about the way that things were done years ago, and actually, they had a two-part video with Stuart on the way that they used to do things. They were talking about lobster, but instead of like the way that lobstering is now, what they used to do with it then, they used to just pick it off the beach and plow it under for fertilizer. It was kind of neat, and something that was always crossed my mind was maybe there's, of course, we're all, we have an older population, and a lot of our seniors are passing on, and they're taking a lot of the old-time things that used to happen around here, whether it be logging, fishing, farming, and things like that. My grandfather, he had a mixed vegetable farm when I was originally growing up, and a lot of those things are lost. There used to be at one time in this area, over 30 dairy farms, now there's only two.
Oh, wow.
And it's something that maybe that councils should possibly think about doing down the road in the future, because there's a lot of information, and nowadays with once stuff is on the web, and some of these older seniors and the older generation in the municipality, if we could get some of them to come on in here and do an interview like you did with each one of our councillors, and like pick a subject, whatever it is, and talk about the way things used to be. Like, a lot of people don't realize what an outhouse is. I wasn't quite old enough to remember that, but it's true. And your home was only heated with wood stoves, and your food was only prepared with wood stoves. So that was something to think about. And something else you mentioned is regards to TikTok. I think council has to have a discussion about a later date. I hear that there's a lot of push from different government organizations to start weaning the government organizations off of TikTok. So now that you've mentioned that, and that's something that was on my mind for a future agenda event, or agenda discussion, or even, I haven't even discussed it with staff yet, but maybe that's something we need to look into, because I really don't know where TikTok's going. I know right now it's the hot media site to be for the younger generation, but there's also been some problems pointed out with it as well. Madam CEO?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So we do know that the federal and the government in Canada and the provincial government in Nova Scotia has said that no government-issued mobile device can have TikTok on it. So Mike Soret, our IT, is actually working with the province right now to try and determine if there's any implication trickling down from municipal.
Yeah. I'm sorry, I sort of took it off your subject and the things that you're doing, but it's just two things that struck my interest. But yeah, I was very pleased to participate in your get-to-know-your-councillor-in-the-area. I think I was the first one.
You were, yeah.
I noticed some things that I do do. When I get nervous, I start pulling my thumbs, and I gotta work on that.
It went really well, yeah.
Yeah, and it's been going very well. All right, I'm gonna turn the floor over to councillor Lauren Cushing.
Thank you, Marissa. Your history of Cape Forchue will be very interesting, very interesting. Secondly, you get their music weekly. What do you, can you clear?
Sure. If possible, we'd really love to have a fiddler come and walk around the grounds for around an hour every, for example, Saturday. We think that live music is...
At Cape Forchue?
Yes, exactly. Walking around the grounds, you'll be there, Xing Trail, and then up to the lighthouse as well, just because we find that music is something universal that people enjoy, and so we thought it would attract more interest from tourists and locals as well.
I don't know if you give it any thought or not, but there's a number of community halls in our area that have music nights. Might be interesting just to go video them and just put it on our site for, just for people to see how active seniors really are.
Sure, yeah, that's a great idea.
Something to think about. Thank you.
Any more questions, comments? Seeing none. Thank you very much, Marissa. Welcome to the team. I know I've welcomed you as there before. How long have you been with the municipality so far?
Around seven months.
Yeah, it hasn't been all that long, so. Thank you for all the work you're doing, and looking forward to my next interview. Never give a politician the opportunity to get on the camera or take a microphone.
It's been working well so far, so.
Yeah, it's been working well so far. We've been behaving ourselves, right?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on to item number seven, correspondence for action, item 7.1.1, Environmental Stewardship Survey slash Toolkit. Madam CEO?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So there was just a few questions from the councillors when they received this email about if there was going to be one response from the municipality or individual responses. And Jenny went ahead and got the questions for us, and they're in your package, so that you can see them in advance. And I think the idea is, is that individual councillors kind of will respond in terms of, you know, their feelings on the biodiversity questions that are being asked in the survey. I did note that there's a heavy bias in the survey around a municipal connection. Not sure what the purpose is around that, given that the environment act is a provincial body of legislation and regulation. But it's my understanding that the intent is for each individual elected official to answer on their own, and the extension was made, I believe, until the end of this week to get that response in.
There was also a point in that thing there as well, about if we wanted to have a presentation, I guess council would consider that too, and I can't remember the lady's name, I'm trying to pull it up.
Marie.
Marie? Okay. So what is the wishes of council? So you want the CEO or staff to reach out to this group to request a presentation? By Marie? I'm gonna need that in a motion for recommendation to regular council. Councillor?
I think it'd be a great idea to have a presentation here. That's what I think.
Most generally, I'd prefer a motion, so it's in the books, and... Okay, moved by councillor Lauren Cushing, seconded by councillor Patty Durkey. A motion to have Marie from Mersey Utopiatic make a presentation to council, or arrange a presentation to council. So is there any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Okay, moving on, item 7.1.2, Order of Nova Scotia Nominations for 2023.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Last year, council made a nomination to the Order of Nova Scotia, and as far as our records indicate, it was the first time council ever made a nomination, and your nominee did receive the Order of Nova Scotia. And so, this notice came out to Warden Cunningham just as a reminder that the nomination window is open again. Staff have no recommendations for nominations, and we do have a deadline of next week if there was an individual that council wished to nominate.
So, any people you can think of to nominate? Councillor Cushing, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Do we do this here, or do we do this in-camera, make nominations? And how do we proceed here?
My recommendation would be that if there were individuals that were of interest, you could just create an email thread amongst the councillors and myself, and we can generate a list, keeping in mind, there's a deadline for next week to get the submission in.
Okay, thank you.
All right, everyone, is that good? Moving on, item 7.2, for information, the municipal, 7.2.1, the Municipal Profile and Financial Condition Indicators Report. You all have that in your package, and I'm pleased to say, looks pretty good. Deputy Ward. My apologies, councillor Holbert.
I was going to, I know it's for information only, and I was going to ask the CEO if she could give a brief overview. I feel like I have a pretty good understanding of it, but just, you know, for those in the audience and those who are watching online, it is a 38-page report, and it can be a little daunting to understand if it's the first look, but maybe she could go through high-level, please?
Yep. So if anybody's interested and they have access to the internet, the agenda for today has this document linked on it. And basically, what the province has designed is a process whereby they look at certain metrics that can be measured, so financial metrics, demography metrics, to compare within municipalities in Nova Scotia how we're doing. So we have what's called a house. So there's a base, the structure of the house and the roof of the house. So inside the base of the house, we're measured on the three-year change in the tax base, so the actual amount of assessment that's available for taxation. And the idea is that communities will grow. So our metric that we're measured against is inflation there. So what the province would like to see is that municipalities continue to grow with the pace of inflation, and we're doing really well. In 2019, 20, our assessment roll grew by 5.7%, and in the report released for 2020, 2021, our assessment grew by 7.9%, which was just a little bit ahead of inflation. And that reflects growth in value, as well as real growth, so new structures, new builds. Reliance on a single business or institution, so obviously, every bankbook wants a diversified portfolio, so the province likes to see municipalities not be too heavily reliant on a single tax account. I think we've all heard stories about, you know, one industry towns where the mill closes or something like that, and so if we can diversify the portfolio, that's what the province would like to see. And residential tax effort is also in the foundation, the basement of the house, and that's a measure of a household's ability to pay their tax bill based on their income. And what the province likes to see is, they like to see that the required amount of a household income be under 4% of that income. So for example, in the District of Yarmouth, I think the median income is somewhere around $58,000. And so in the District of Yarmouth, about 2.7% of that $58,000 is required to pay the tax bill. Moving up in the structure, we talk about things like uncollected taxes, operating reserves, debt servicing, our outstanding debt, and our undepreciated assets. And basically, what that does, it takes a look at the revenue we can generate, the debt we've taken on, and our ability to replace capital assets. So over time, looking at what you've borrowed money for and what you're going to need money for, keeping all of that in balance. So 6.7% of the municipality's tax levy is in uncollected taxes, which is well below what is expected by the province, so we're doing well on receivables. Our operating reserves are at 56.5%, which again, is on pace with what the province is looking to see. Our debt service is low. It takes about 3.7% of our own source revenue to service our debt, and our outstanding operating debt is zero. We have no operating debt. And our undepreciated assets are about 59.2%, so we have to keep in mind in the future, what's it going to be required to replace those assets or recapitalize them. And then the roof includes our deficits in the last five years. I should say that municipalities in Nova Scotia are not allowed to have deficits year over year, so if something goes drastically wrong in a given year and we fall behind, we have to take money out of our savings and balance the books with that. We are not allowed to put a deficit on the books when we close the books at the end of the year. But we've never been in that situation. Liquidity, we're at 3.8%, which means that we generate enough operating revenue to look after ourselves and not fall behind. Reliance on government transfers, we've got a blip there. So typically, we're right around the 2%, 2% or something like that, and we're at 7.2% this year. And that's because in the reporting period that this report covers, the municipality received transfers due to COVID from the federal government and the provincial government, and they came in after we set our budget. So it created an inflamed revenue coming from other governments that we weren't planning on, so it's a bit of a blip. And then our combined reserves, which represent our savings compared to the revenue we generate, and we're at 86.2%. So overall, we are performing better than the average, and we are not considered a risk. We're low risk as far as the province is concerned with respect to our financial stability.
Deputy Ward.
Thank you, councillor Holbert. That was useful. I was gonna add a few things in, but our CEO did a fantastic job. Just, I will just mention, our CEO did mention operating reserves, and we do have a robust number in the operating reserve category. Having said that, it's just good for the public and everybody to know that that number's always fairly large, because it really serves as a go-to if you have an emergency. And many people may be familiar with Litton, B.C. That was the town that had the wildfires, unfortunately, very, very small, open, remote B.C., and then it was followed by some horrendous floods. And at one of the FCMs, I talked to the mayor and some other folks from that municipality, of only about 1,500 people, and they had an operating reserve of about a million dollars, I think, maybe one and a half million dollars. But they went through that, they went through that very, very quickly, and really, they had some difficulty because they needed to, they needed to front the money for all those emergency services, police, cleanup, all those types of things, and then they'd get the money from the feds and province. So without a lot of, you know, without having, you know, a lot of money to go to... you know, a lot of money to go to there, it's very, very hard for a municipality to deal with an emergency. So, if residents or other people ask you, why we have so much money in that account? Why aren't we using it for other things? That's really the, that's really the sort of standard answer, and the correct answer is that it's put there for a very, very rainy day that we, all of us hope never happens, so. Those were my comments, thank you.
Thank you very much, deputy Warden. Any more comments? Seeing none. Last item for information is item 7.2.2, the New Roads Memo. All right. Item number eight, old business, there's no old business to attend to. Item number nine, new business, item 9.1, CEO Committee Terms of Reference. You all have that in your package. Also, one order of business that we have to do here is for our terms of reference. Councillor Allen, your term is complete on that committee, and as per the terms of reference, we need to appoint another council member-at-large, other than myself or the deputy Warden. So, what is the pleasure of the council in that regard?
If you're looking for nominations?
Yeah.
Nominating councillor Holbert.
So, you're nominating councillor Holbert?
I'll second that.
I have to question, though, does she accept the nomination?
I'll jump at once.
Is there any other nominations? Third and final time, any other nominations? Hearing none, I'd entertain a motion to recommend to regular council that we appoint councillor Sherry Holbert to the CEO committee. Moved by councillor Daniel Allen, seconded by councillor Patty Durkey. Any discussion on that? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carried. All right. There should be a little bit of housekeeping with that as well, because we have, under contract, Mr. Gerald Walsh to help the CEO committee to complete that, and I think maybe, Madam CEO?
Sure. So, the wording in section five represents the process that was undertaken prior to engaging Gerald Walsh and Associates, so my recommend, recommendation would be that we just update section five wording to reflect the scope that's in your contract with Gerald Walsh.
We need a motion for that right now.
Yes, we do.
I'll make that motion, that we update the annual process to reflect what we're currently doing, and that's for another two years, right? Two more, yes. Another two years?
Yep. Okay, a motion on the floor, I have a second here. Seconded by councillor Daniel Allen. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right. Item number 10, in camera. I need a motion to go in, well, just a point of order on this, Madam CEO. We need to take a recess for 15 minutes, roughly, so Mike can update some computers. So, do we do a motion to go into camera, or do we make a motion to go into recess?
You could do it combined, a motion to go in camera with a 15-minute recess immediately.
All right. So, is anyone willing to make that motion? Moved by councillor Nick Hilton, seconded by councillor Patty Durkey. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Thank you.